Okay, I've got seven oh six. And we are officially gonna call the meeting to order. The board of selectmen is here in its entirety. Is there any public to be heard? Is there any public to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on for selectman briefing. I will be brief. So we're on the same page in a couple of things. Our new employee hardly started Sunday at the transfer station.
Good.
Casey was down there, spent a little time with him. I spent a little time with him. I was impressed with his rapport with the public. And seemed to be catching on real quick and seemed to like what he was doing.
He's enthusiastic.
Yes, very much so, so. We wish him the best and we were not optimistic. It's gonna be a nice marriage down there. We have a furnace issue at North Memorial Hall. It is not a new issue. About a year and a half ago, Joe had contracted with with our heating contractor to Nutmeg to do some patching, but we've got gaskets that have just lived their lifespan. And
You said gas leaks?
Gaskets, gaskets.
Oh, gaskets, thank you.
And basically, it's a job that should be done in spring or summer. So we're gonna try to limp by.
Living through the winter?
Not really, because we use it so minimally. And if we open the doors and properly monitor, we can control. There are fumes that are coming up. But they're not CO type fumes.
Okay.
Now, I had talked to Nutmeg. They said it's too big a job for them. Although last year they had told Joe that they give us a price on it. They are going to, they are referring us and will give us, give you Catherine a list of two or three boiler contractors.
Very good.
I'm going to anticipate this, what I my layperson's understanding, what has to be done is the boiler pretty much has to be broken down and new gaskets throughout. So I anticipate it's gonna be a costly venture, but stay tuned. The furnace is functioning. We kind of paid special attention to it this past week. Because knowing we had a large weekend function coming up. And their concerns was about the heating and the vestibule and all that. And what we did was we modified the temperatures with the new units, the split units we put in there and turned up the heat on the boiler. Unfortunately, while we were testing, we ended up cooking the library people out there, opening their windows and everything.
That's what's happening in the house.
But, but we did find a happy medium and it was pretty comfortable in the hall.
After they
On Saturday.
Or passing out.
Yeah, yeah. So there is a method, if there is gonna be another long event in there, we can address it. But on the interim, the furnace is used probably ninety percent of what it was before we put the split units in, as well as our oil consumption. So it's not like, right now it's more a backup system than actually using it on a regular basis.
I'm glad to hear that. When it comes to the, the special attention that was given, it was just doing that kind of thing because people were here, going to be here.
Correct.
And Casey knows how to do that?
Well, he got a quick education on it and Joe helped him.
It's quick study too.
Yeah, yeah. We did find out there was a faulty thermostat on the boiler that was replaced. I'm not sure if that helped with what we were doing over there, but it was comfortable over the weekend.
All right, thank you.
But just something, it's, it's gonna be something we're gonna have to look at and it's probably gonna be a pricey costly price tag. Something I brought up the last two meetings we've had and, and our board will have to address it in the future is how we want to address the oil tank and furnace removal at Trumco House. I think we had briefly talked about it.
I thought we found a contract with them.
We have a contract to do it.
And we have a thousand dollar estimate.
Eighty, eighty-five hundred from Nutmeg to do that. And a thousand dollar maximum from Rick Zulik.
Yep.
But what we haven't decided is how we wanna pay for that. I think it's a legitimate expense out of the capital fund. But that's something we'll have to address. I also last week mentioned that we had the freight liner that was in repair. We had concerns it may run a seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
This was with the California exhaust system regulations that we inherited with the diesel. They completed the repairs. It came in around twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand.
So while it's an unanticipated expense, it's less than what we were worried about. We had a
But it is repaired.
It's repaired and it's back online.
Okay.
Our loader, the major loader down there, we've got some brake issues. Our in-house mechanic was unable to be able to repair them. And those costs are estimated to be around four thousand dollars. I understand those are in, in process.
You said those repairs are in process?
Yeah.
Okay.
Last week I also reported, or two weeks ago, that we had some concerns about major leaking in the transfer station large compactor. Casey has taken a look at it, anticipated it's not as much of a concern that the leaking that's happening is minimal. So we're gonna monitor it. They're gonna, they find that only leaks when it gets real heated up. So they're gonna run some tests on it and try to monitor, but
Did they clean out under so they could see?
They're in the process of doing that. Pretty much all I have in a briefing. Item five, there is a correction under acceptance of the minutes. The last date should read November fourteenth. Is, should be on your agendas and not November fifteenth.
Pretty worried that we're gonna do my agenda. This is yours, right? Not the agenda?
I was wrong.
Oh, I totally
You wanna make a couple of copies of the agenda?
No, I have the minutes. This is acceptance of the minutes of regular meeting of ten twenty-three.
Ten thirty-one.
Okay, ten, so ten thirty-one, the minutes are not posted on the website. I went out to get them because I didn't have them before. What's out there is the agenda for ten thirty-one, not the minutes.
Yes, I've gotta change that tomorrow. I just wanna
Thank you.
Later in the day today.
That takes forever.
But just when I go to post it, just it's gonna look very similar to the agenda because it's only it says minutes and then it has the stuff right next to it called it, you know, so it's not Christine's typical minutes is what you'll see when I go to put that on there.
Okay, so we have those minutes.
So they, they haven't been made available to the public?
No.
Um, no, I inadvertently
Okay, well, let's skip that one then.
So, yeah.
Uh, November sixth. That's posted and everything?
Those ones, that's interesting. I didn't have any problem with the minutes, but they're out there twice.
November sixth?
The same, I printed the both off, yeah. And then looked at them to go, are they the same? So
My, my apologies. I'm usually, I'm pretty careful when I'm posting that.
Do we have a motion for November sixth?
Uh, I move that we accept the minutes from November, I move that we accept the minutes from November sixth.
I'll second.
Are there any discussion or corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
November fourteenth.
Those ones, we do have a correction.
I'll take a motion to accept and then we'll make corrections.
Um, I make a motion to accept them with the following correction. There, and under item new business A. Let's see here, appointment of Alex Hasstillo. It has they, it's doubled up. It says Silver Smith moved, yada, yada, and then it goes Silver Smith moved. It's the whole three lines done again. So that was just repeated. It's only cosmetic. I wouldn't be concerned about it.
Chris, you can note those changes.
All right, I'll second.
We have a second. Are there any more additions or corrections? We have motion on the floor, it's been seconded, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you folks. Hear from boards, commissions or committees? Hear from boards, commissions or committees? Hearing none, we will move on. Old business. Ashford School Roof Replacement Project. As we talked last week, the contract has been signed with the architect. I have not heard from Jimmy Uper about us. I'm assuming they're gonna be setting up a meeting.
Okay.
I'm assuming perhaps they were waiting till after the elections that are all the boards and that gets settled down, so. We're still waiting to hear from them. I did have a discussion today with Superintendent Ford. And she has not heard back from the AS regarding our application for the funding for the bonding. She's a little surprised because they although we're still on, on, within the the deadline for them to do that, but she had been told we'd probably hear back within two weeks and it was submitted, I believe on the ninth. So we're right there, but the thing is, they don't deny it, but they ask you to resubmit with corrections if they want corrections. And you have to resubmit by the first of December. So she's gonna be following up on that this week to find out if there's an issue. I said maybe no news is good news in this case. Maybe I'm over optimistic. All right, any questions on that?
No.
Hearing none. Item B is ratification of the twenty-three, twenty-six ass fee contract. Erin, do you wanna give a quick overview to the, the board on where we are?
Hopefully, we've got a good contract. I've gone through and made all the corrections as far as typos and errors and made sure that, you know, the proposals that were agreed upon between both parties was in there correctly. I did have to make some corrections on those because our rep did have some of that incorrect. So I just went back to my notes and, and re-verified. I have looked at this contract, I don't know how many times. So I'm hoping that everybody has had a chance to, to look at it. That's why I sent it out on multiple occasions. And hopefully this will be the last time and obviously if we come up with anything major, we'll have to do an emery.
Hopefully I won't bug you with any more typos. I, I do realize that this is above and beyond the scope of your responsibilities. But we do appreciate all your efforts on this.
Is some of those types, I just couldn't believe.
Much more painful than it had to be.
Oh, yeah, because there was areas in the contract that didn't need to be touched, you know, because the proposals, the, the agreements were in certain sections. I just couldn't figure out why, you know, why is there something here when we never had anything there?
You know, we don't have, it's interesting, we don't have issues when we're working with the union members here directly.
Right.
Council four, from my time in that seat through to here, they just, their follow-through is terrible. They're even how they set things up is awful. I don't wanna work with them. I'd rather work with their own people. So
There is, I do have to say John Cole though.
John Cole is exceptional.
Yes, he is totally the exception.
But it seems like the person who is accountable for making sure this gets done, no matter who we've gotten, hasn't done it. And, you know, I've gone, I've been one that's updated it myself. Now you have.
Yep. And I'm not still completely satisfied, but I'd like to type it from scratch, but
From now, I don't know, from now on, is it from scratch or did you copy paste or what?
No, I just, what Lauren said is I, I just fixed a lot of stuff because I couldn't figure out. It was like, it was big and, you know, and the font and then it's like
The formatting is, whatever, yeah.
And, and some of it I couldn't figure out how to correct it without messing up everything, so I had to leave it.
Yeah, that's what I do too.
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept this contract.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I, I'd just like to also echo, I mean, our, our dealings with our local union folks here have been a pleasure for many, many years. We understand that we both have different roles when we're in negotiations or whatever. But bottom line, I think we all have the best interests of the town.
And
And, and I think it's
And the employees.
And, and I think the contracts reflect that. It's a cooperative nature. I will tell you that I've heard, and I won't name particularly legal people, but I, I've talked to several councils who run into the same experiences that we've had
Ah.
with, with not dealing with their local union reps, but on the state level. I, I don't know if it's just they're understaffed or the big towns or cities take precedent and, and we kind of fall by the wayside, but unfortunately, Ashford is not unique to this sort of a problem. And I don't know.
We're attached to the same kind of service that the bigger cities.
Yeah, sure are.
At least our employees are, to their benefit.
Yeah.
Roger, I saw you diligently reading there. Did you have any questions or?
No, I, no, nothing, nothing glaring.
I went through it several times and I thought it reflected what our negotiations were.
You're inheriting it.
That's a we, that's a we. Yes, that's a collective we.
All right, well, we have a motion on the floor, made to accept the new union contract and a second. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And shall we proceed to sign? I understand we have six copies each.
I have, I have four right now because I totally forgot, so I'll sign and you just pass it around.
Let's see, you need your back.
Or you can sign your page and just, and just we just pass it that way.
Also is the side, kind of is an aside, typically what we do with the union contract in terms of percentage is what we do for the non-union employees.
Yeah, I thought we would address it after we all sign because I wanna talk about and there's one other thing that, that I don't think we've done in the past. I know it's come up at least once. Were, and we only have a couple in this situation, but we pass that same increase of this. Do we pass that same increase on to our
I'm sorry, one more time.
On the, the three percent that we're gonna do for the non-union.
Right.
Do we also gonna pass it on to our temporary employees? That are on hourly?
What have we done before?
We haven't. And we did have, I understand a couple of years ago, there was a complaint about it. It wasn't followed through on.
What's your perspective?
To be fair, I think it's fair to do it to everybody.
Yeah.
You know.
We're not looking for the temporary employees to go elsewhere, so to speak.
True, and, and we get good value for our camps, because there's no benefits involved or anything like that.
And the number of hours that they put in when you talk about that level of increases.
I, I think, my personal opinion, to be fair, give it to everything.
I feel the same.
Okay, so this one is complete, so there's a couple of
Oh, we might have to do another one?
We gotta do six.
Well, we'll, we'll do four and so the copy I gave you, Catherine, sign that one too. And we'll just sign four and I'll just go from there. And I still got, I'll have Lauren, she's got to sign her page and I'll just attach it.
All right, so I've signed three so far.
Yeah, and then there's one yours that I gave you and I'll just email you.
This is the other one?
Yeah.
And there's a page you sign? I don't see it.
Yeah.
It's safe.
Yeah, I don't know why it's in time, but put together.
Want to show you your handwriting analysis? Yours says yours, you're an expert.
Don't do mine again.
Before I bet my coffee certainly.
Oh, I have something for you. It's in the part, it is Thanksgiving, so jalapeno, cranberry. Look, cranberry chunk. I've been making it for years. Thank you. Oh, I got someone who likes spicy food. Spicy.
We all set with your end, Karen?
We are, so what I'll do is I'll make sure to get signed copy up to Laura. So she has it and then what I'll do is I'll scan one that has our signed signatures and email everybody. So everybody's got where the words are.
Right, I'm going to, at this point, make a suggestion that the board add an item to the agenda. Consideration of increases for non-union employees.
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, as we started to discuss historically, whatever are increases that we do for our union contract, we pass on to our appointed or non-union staff. I would ask that we consider a motion to do that, but also include temporary employees.
So then I'd like to amend, amend my motion to say for permanent, is it permanent and temporary employees or full-time?
Appointed.
Appointed?
Permanent employees. And temporary part-time.
So again, the motion is to apply the same level, amount, a level of increase, percentage of increase to our appointed, non-union appointed employees and our temporary part-time employees.
I assume, Roger, you're in line with the
Uh, yeah, yeah, I was just digesting it. Uh, yep, I second that.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Good luck with your house, Bill.
Yes, thank you.
Have a nice holiday.
You too.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Yep.
All right. Number eight, new business. Boards and commissions. There's a couple of them going down the line here, in particular, I'm thinking the Artana Future. I think it would probably be appropriate for us to do that as our new board at our next meeting and not this, this meeting.
Okay.
Mainly because the term like, for instance, our town, our future runs co-terminus with the town of the with the term of the, the new board coming on. So I would
All right, I know Nora Galavan approached me and for some reason I wasn't sure if we had gone ahead and done this. I forgot that we hadn't. And I don't have her phone number to call her to say, oops.
We, we have it and I, I think we passed that information on to Margaret and Mike Ganick.
Okay, I was asked the other night.
Okay.
We'll be meeting next Tuesday where we can
That's the plan.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So I would just suggest let's hold on and make those appointments to our next meeting.
I love how eager she is to be on there.
Very, very, I hear. I understand there are no tax refunds, is that correct, Chris?
No, but you have to reappoint Lynn.
Oh, thank you. Item one up there, and, and we had missed doing it on the timeline. Under boards and commission appointments, we need to reappoint, reappoint Lynn Byberg for a term to expire June thirtieth of twenty-five.
So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any discussion? The only thing I would say is that while we miss Kara, Lynn has been doing a fine job.
That's what I think too. She's been very responsive.
And I've got nothing but compliments both from the public.
Good.
Who's, has not always been the case, no matter who the assessor is. She's got
The job is.
She's got a professional friendly manner about her. That, and takes the time to explain things to people. I think she's a, a big asset to the town. Any more discussions?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor of the reappointment of Lynn Byberg to assess her for the town of Ashford, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. All right, consideration of contract for North Memorial Hall Cleaning Services. I think Chris passed on the proposal that we got from our cleaning service here. You should, we, I just found a copy today and gave it to her. I thought she passed it on. I think she handed it to you today too, though. Chris, you didn't pass those on?
I'm sorry?
Did you pass out the contracts for the cleaning proposal?
No, I
Oh.
Okay, I'll do it now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Another week?
Roger, you can check me on the math, but I it came out in my figuring to be somewhere around between twenty-eight hundred and three thousand a year.
Twenty-eight hundred and three thousand?
Yeah. To give credit where credit's due, or at least where the recommendation came from, Casey was the one that came up with this. And, and he did go over how much time his guys spend on it, which he thought would be better served by working on the roads and doing things other than, than cleaning. I know we're all very happy with this particular company's performance.
And this is the same one we've had?
Same one that does this building also, does the senior center. Casey also worked into his budget and they're doing the bathrooms and that at, at the, I don't know if any of you have been in the bathrooms prior to TPW. But they, these folks picked that up. He's on, he's working within, it's like day and night.
I can't, I've seen the bathroom.
Well, see them now. It's like day and night. I can, I can imagine the mess it was to get it in the shape of his mouth.
I understand this correctly. What they're saying is, is every two weeks they're doing the hall and the kitchen area and every week they're doing the two bathrooms.
Correct.
Uh, the hall, the, every two weeks, the hall and kitchen area along with the entrance hallway. And then basically every two weeks they're doing the bathrooms and the hallway, uh, entrance hallway.
Correct, that's what I understand.
Okay, so weekly they're being cleaned, the bathrooms.
Bathroom, they're being cleaned. That was my big thing.
Let me just check math here. I got twenty-four seventy.
Are you doing the math?
Yeah.
Love that about you.
Clear, and then so twenty-six weeks and forty-five.
This is so much better than what we had before. When I asked, when I was sitting in your seat, where's, do we have a contract? You know, where's the contract? And we had nothing. I had to call them and they didn't even have it. They, they had something from, I don't know, two thousand twelve and they didn't raise their rates.
I, I found that to be the case with our exterminating service. That we let go and we pick up willing contestants like day and night.
Really?
There, there were several contracts that when I asked for copies and I, because I wanted to see schedules, when are they coming?
I've, you're going, where are they?
I've got a total of thirty-six forty.
Because you did it based upon ninety-five every
Ninety, ninety-five, uh, every other week. That's, that's twenty-six weeks.
Yeah.
So ninety-five times twenty-six.
Yeah.
Uh, whoops, sorry, backspace. That's twenty-four seventy. And then that, it means that the other twenty-six weeks are at forty-five, right?
Yeah.
That's eleven seventy, so eleven seventy plus twenty-four seventy. Is this thirty-six forty, thirty-six forty?
And it, or any special, uh, the first cleaning is gonna be more. And the, if there's any event that leaves, left a mess behind, I don't know how it looks, you know, after these events. So we can anticipate it will be, probably be a little bit more than that.
That's something that I think we, talking about the mess left, left behind or whatever.
Yeah.
I think that's something that we have to look at. You know, right now we kind of have loose You know, right now we kind of have loose rules. If somebody, if you want, or if I wanna have a birthday party there.
Right.
We go, we we reserve the room and say there's no charge, make a donation to the. Uh, food bank.
Oh, is that what we've been doing?
That's what I've been told and that's what we've been doing. I've been told we've been doing that for a long time. Um, I've had some of those donations left with me. Some of them are. A good amount of food.
Okay.
They drop them over at church that distributes.
Okay.
You know. Um, some of them are not so much so, you know.
Right.
Ten or fifteen cans of beans or something.
Right.
Um, I really think that we ought to look at. Coming up with a dollar amount. Like maybe fifty dollars.
I think so too.
And. In talking to Casey today, because he helps with the food banks, been doing it for years over there.
Right.
Those twenty cans of food that somebody donates to, they go to Big Y or stop and shop at Walmart and buy them and they get those twenty cans. If the money was donated to the food bank. They can get ten times that number of cans.
See, I donate the money to.
Because they do it through food share.
Yep.
So you get much bigger bank. So we're not gonna do it tonight, but my suggestion is we keep it in mind down the road. Let's revisit what we're doing. If it's gonna be a big affair up there, maybe we wanna ask for a cleaning deposit. And if it's not left in in a presentable merit, why should we have to pick up the difference in the cost? That'll be on the users. Um.
I like that idea as well.
But you know, uh, and I I'm not locked into this, but I'm just thinking a fifty-dollar fee for use of a hall that size. You can't get that anywhere.
Um. The uh. I can recall, and I wouldn't be surprised if it's not happening again already. Going in there and the tables, you know, stacked and everything, filthy. Absolutely filthy. People not sweeping up after themselves for whatever reason.
I I've actually.
Public works not necessarily going in either.
Right, right, because they have other things to do.
Exactly.
That's where this company's gonna be able to come in hand. But I can think of two occasions where I had to call people that we let use the hall. And ask them to come back.
Uh, what was their reaction?
Nothing but apologies. They just, it was an oversight, they didn't mean, because most of them wanna use it again. But but it happens and there's no reason that the town should be, in addition to giving them a hall, than having to clean up after them, just.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I digress, I apologize.
That's uh. Uh, that's a good suggestion.
I think it's something we ought to think about, perhaps even for our next agenda. Or that that may be a little busy, maybe the one after that. Um, there's a motion on the floor then. What was that bottom line figure, uh?
Uh, I got thirty-six forty.
I would think that it'd be, should we be saying about four thousand? Not too much?
It's an estimate anyway.
Estimated at roughly four thousand.
Yep, not to exceed four thousand.
Right, right. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion on the floor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous, thank you.
And actually, what we could do is we could, if we're going to have this on our next agenda, what we could conceivably do is to um. Have that start effect of January first.
Oh, I think so. Get something in, it's too late for the December.
Exactly, but.
But maybe even February for, you know, give her thirty or sixty days.
So they understand what.
Because there are some people that have already reserved it. I hate to call them and say, well, now it's.
Okay.
So we can talk, but I think. We, when we've done that same sort of thing, we don't do it too much in St. Phillips, but if we did charge. Or we were changing a rate, we give them two or three months of past notice.
Good.
Like with our cemetery clocks.
Good.
Which is something else we have.
That's something actually.
Yeah. Um. Item D, discuss and act on formulation of of our twenty-four schedule. I think that's probably also something the new board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agenda items for upcoming board of selectmen meetings. I think we've already discussed that.
Some cleaning.
The only thing I'd like to say is uh congratulations on your elections. And uh.
Oh, thank you for your service.
Yeah.
We'll be working in partnership for the betterment of the town and uh.
Yeah, and I think that this is a good team for that. Uh, very good team. I think you you bring a wealth of experience. I have some experience. You've been gaining experience. My God, you go through and sign off on the. The uh.
He does the reading when we don't.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think I think this will work out really well.
Yeah, Bill, it's been a pleasure.
Thanks, Roger. Alright, I've got seven forty-one.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, folks. You have a good night.